All right, it's six oh two and I'll call this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council to order. We do have a quorum present. Marty's gonna lead us in our invocation.
Dear Lord, we just wanna first thank you for bringing us here safely together tonight. We ask that you guide us through our decisions and help us make decisions to help better our community. We thank you for all the blessings that you cast upon us each and every day. We also ask that you watch over our children, our family, how they're back to school. And finally, Lord, we just ask that you watch over us as we drive home safely tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join my pledge. All right, I know we have a... On our revenue and expense report, we have an error in that, so we won't get that updated. So I think the council's had an opportunity to review the regular session minutes and the special session minutes. Of course, that revenue expense report, I checked before. Mary, would you like to make a motion on?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes but not the revenue and expense report.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Second, Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so on items of community interest, does anybody have anything they'd like to share tonight? I don't. Anybody visiting have anything they'd like to share this month? All right, we don't have anybody here for citizen participation. So we will jump right into our items to be considered. Consider an act upon approval of transferring certificates of deposits numbers eight eight one one, eight eight one two, eight eight one three to the Techstar logic account. These CDs, we've talked about over several meetings, yield essentially nothing. And that Techstar account yields, I think it's four point two five percent. So it, and it also fits it somewhere where we have some flexibility to use it if we need to at times. So...
I'll make a motion to move it, but with council approval to spend it.
Good.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion and a second, and I think that's a good add. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we can jump right into our discussion items.
Yes, sir, we can. The first discussion item is the proposed tax rate. You have the worksheet in your packet. And essentially, the proposed tax rate, the M and O, and this is the voter approval rate. That's what we can go up to without voter approval. It is set at point four four two three nine per hundred valuation. The debt rate is gonna be set at, is up about a nickel from last year. It is point one four five to, one four five, one two for a hundred valuation. Bring it to a total of point five eight seven five one, which I believe that is a little lower than it was last year, about three tenths of a cent or something like that. So that was just gonna be the staff recommendation that we go with. It could be impacted with the homestead exemption. We're not sure yet what that'll look like yet because our process says there hasn't calculated that yet. We don't need to make any decision on this tonight, but we kinda need to know whether the council wants to move towards this as we have done historically up to the voter approved rate or no new tax rate. We should take this back and produce significantly less revenue.
And what is that change in revenue if we stay at the no new tax rate?
Well, the valuation, property valuations of this are one nine four, one three one, uh, one hundred ninety four million, one hundred thirty one thousand seven hundred and five. And with the... Kathy, wanna help me here?
Did you ask the no new revenue?
The no new revenue.
It's the one nine eight nine four six three five.
That's the value.
It's a hundred eighty five million, eight eighty seven, six fourteen. So it would impact this, I haven't calculated that difference, but...
I just calculated it on the, on the voter approval. I didn't calculate it on the no new revenue.
I calculated on the voter approval too, and it's about one point one four.
Yeah, I got one point one six eight. And then two hundred eighty eight thousand would be the INS portion.
And I think last year, our, on the voter approval, it was almost one point three million. At least that's what we had by the...
Well, that's what we have on the financials, but that, it's, it's one point one six eight on the one ninety eight. And if you use even the total without taking out homestead exemptions, you're only at a million fifty nine for the M and O portion. So we're overstating our revenue on the budget.
We did last year.
Yeah, and, but we're proposed as over again. I wouldn't go any higher than the million fifty nine.
That, that's just very odd. We didn't, I didn't figure anything for income because I didn't know what y'all were gonna do. I didn't calculate any number in there. I just brought it down to where, closer to where we are.
Right, but I'm saying if we take this worksheet and go up to, even if you don't back out the homestead exemptions, if you use the rep, the number online, eighteen E, which would be total taxable values, and multiply it at the voter approval rate of point four four two three nine, you're gonna get a million fifty nine four eighty nine. So to me, you can't, we don't wanna put more in the budget.
Yeah.
'Cause that's money, I mean, we're not gonna have it.
I agree.
We're overstaying our revenue.
That's the judicious thing to do. I agree with you.
So I, I calculate it somewhere between eight eighty and the million fifty nine, which is what needs to be on the budget.
So when's we expect to see the homestead impact? I thought we would have had that by now.
I thought the homestead was just school district, that the city has a three thousand dollar.
Over sixty five.
It's three thousand dollars. It's going to five?
No, she said if you go up forty thousand and one.
But the homestead exemption only affects the school district. It goes up forty. It's going from a hundred to a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty. But that's only school districts. The city has an exemption of three thousand.
She just told me that if she would not send out anything until after the election, but I'm, I'm gonna ask her.
We'll get, we'll get that cleared.
I got, I mean, I just got that off the web, the state website. And that the city can put in an exemption for over sixty five, and ours is three thousand.
Well, we will, on the proposed budget, we'll back into that million fifty nine. Make sure that those numbers are conservative.
That's the, that's the high side.
Yeah.
I'd go... I maybe wouldn't even go that high.
We can talk more about that. Okay, capital requests. There's been some changes and I've asked the staff to be here to talk about them. The first one I want to address that has been changed off that list that y'all have is a fence around the maintenance yard. Chad called me and said, just take that off for this next year. So that will be removed. The street there are Carthell and Harrington and East Elmwood, and that total estimate from contractors, two twenty seven. So Blake, you wanna come up and talk about the F P?
Thank you, Council. So mine, I'd, I'd also talked to Kathy just, just a few minutes ago. I kinda dropped mine off, so I'd love to hear that. So mine, I had asked for part-time salary increase. I'm not sure if we'll put that on the budget, but we're competing for part-time. Right now, we're at six, we're sixteen dollars an hour. We're competing with Hopkins County, Self-Refined Departments on part-time people, so it's kinda a jockey if they're gonna go. So I've asked to try to bump that from sixteen dollars an hour to eighteen dollars an hour. That's one of mine. I dropped the, we had the Hearst rescue tools. I had added at forty five thousand, that was a bid I had gotten. I was wanting to remove that. I, that, that is a necessity, but I think we can buy some time with that. I found if the station remodeled today, that we've got some stuff going with the station, that we would need some things there. And I could drop that from the forty five to thirty if possible.
What would you be giving up, Blake, doing that? What would you be giving up?
The rescue tools?
Yeah.
We're, we're giving up the rescue tools. We've got two sets of tools. One's a battery power, which is what everybody's going to. And then we have a set that I'm not sure how old it is. It's still the motor, the hydraulic, and we were trying to replace the hydraulic system. But we can, we can run that for maintenance program this year.
Okay.
And we get a couple more years out of that one.
Just the jaws, jaws allow, since it cuts into, okay, gotcha.
And also on the ventilation fan, I was gonna strike that one.
Okay.
That's eight thousand. We've got a gas power versus a battery power. We, we use both, the gas powers. It's probably close to twenty years old, but we can throw another carburetor kit on it and probably just put another here.
How often do y'all use it?
Strike those.
How often do y'all use that?
We usually use it on house fires, or we'll try to use a battery. The battery power, if you have someone that's got a CO issue in their house, carbon dioxide or something that's going off, that's to help ventilate the house to get the, the gas out and stuff like that. Many of those are used for, so they're not used that often. You'll use them more in the wintertime, which is coming up.
Okay.
People turn their furnaces and stuff on.
So you're, you'd be adequate still to be able to pay that amount?
Yes, we can still do what we need to do.
Okay.
These are just items that are older, twenty plus years old, that we're looking to slowly upgrade.
We need to have an eye on it, but break me right down for it.
But as far as the, the first new software, we'll start to examine. That's something that we've been looking at for a couple of years. That's, if the city, we'd like to start doing kind of a fire survey or inspections per se throughout the, throughout the city. And the current software that we have now would not, would not work for that. It would not be able to allow you to, if you go and do a survey at somebody's business or something and give them a copy, to be able to keep all that. So we'd have to upgrade to a different survey for that, or a different, different program. But on station equipment, these are things that we're adding to the station. So we're re, we're doing the remodel, as, you know, and today we've found a few little things, but like, that's, that's to help pay for a couple beds, one for each room, some more furniture, just some, just some things like that that we kind of accounted for, but we weren't counting that. For the fire department, that's a little bit more expensive as usual, even though it's probably the same stuff. But I would drop that one from forty five down to thirty on the, to, you know, for the station equipment.
So that's replacing the Hearst rescue tools?
That, that, yes, sir. Yes, sir, dropping that down to thirty. That would be buying the furniture and stuff for the, for the fire inspection.
Okay.
And removing the Hearst tools altogether. And then removing the ventilation fan altogether. It's the same, same as, same as about twenty three five, that's what I figured.
Gotcha.
But I, I do wanna, uh, the Bluetooth headsets for sixty five, this is something, neither, both engines do not have headsets in them. You'll see fire trucks driving around all the time with the headsets on. And that's a noise can, noise canceling, so you're able to hear when you're talking to dispatch or other fire trucks. Right now, it's kinda be, you yell back and forth and scream at each other. So when you're sitting on four hundred horses of power, y'all, it's pretty loud, it's hard to hear. So these noise canceling, neither, when these, both these engines were purchased, they, they had them at the time, but that was kinda, wasn't much of a necessity now. These are also, if you go set an engine one and you hear that fan clutch kick on, you'll know exactly one of the main reasons that we're asking for that. And so I just feel like also communicating back and forth, just like the police squad, they'll communicate back and forth is, is kind of a safety issue.
Sure.
That sounds good.
Any questions?
That all looks good.
Do I?
Now that all went good.
Yeah, they, they did a lot of work today.
On that software, what do you think? You said something about that's a collection software. What would you be able to recoup by being able to use that?
Well, it just helps us document. Right now, if we were to go out and do a fire survey anywhere in the city, we'd have to be, we'd have to go old school and just be on paper. So this allows us to, each year, you can, it depends on how far the city would, would like to go with this. You, your inspection program starts off as a survey, and then each year, you, you build off of that. So this is able to document that and keep that. At the same time, it also allows for, this, this particular program also allows for a station alerting. So whenever we do go full time or whatever, it, right now, we just have to listen to the radios. And this one now will alert you and let you know if you have a call or something. But it's got a lot of, it does scheduling. Right now, we use Google Docs for scheduling back and forth. Well, this will allow us, where everything, it takes all the different programs that we have and combines them into one, basically. Actually, the insurance bill, right now, we use, the, the insurance, we have little circle calls, mainly on the interstate, the big trucks that come through. This will help us in being able to also bill those. We usually... Right, so I thought it was last year. This year, we've collected twenty thousand dollars on wrecks up and down the interstate. So usually the, the semi trucks that come through that have the wreck, we will, we'll send them a bill, and first due, we'll, we'll do all the billing for us. So I, I, essentially, I would have to say that it would probably pay for itself. I think the other program it paid for itself, and I think this one will be the second.
The other one definitely did.
Plus give us a lot more options with it, so.
I like the idea of you guys having more of a electronic format for keeping up with your, like, I invite you guys in once a year to go through these old buildings we have.
Right.
It just makes, gives me peace of mind. It's just a good look and tell me what you see in case there's something you need.
During the fire survey, we go out and look at a building, we get the size, the, the measurements and all that, and it gives us a gallons per minute usage of what we might need. Say we had a fire there. It helps us prepare or do a pre-fire plan also. And this is, this, the program does this also.
So is this on the laptop or a tablet that you, when you do the surveys?
Yes, so, so we have two iPads, the one in each engine right now, that all our program, all our, all our calls go through. So they'll be able to take these out of the fire trucks, walk into your, walk into the business or whatever we're doing a survey on. They can write all this stuff down on the iPad. And then give, we can keep that, and then we can either send a copy to the owner electronically, or we can go and print one off and give it to them and have our copy.
That makes sense.
Eighty power department, please. Blake, you're doing great, John. Appreciate you going through the list too and...
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I spoke with the sheriff, and he wants to go ahead and drop the drone so we can knock that forty five thousand out. And then that will just keep the two in-car cameras for mine and Jason's units. Um, right now, we don't have any in-car cameras for mine and his unit. And we do still make traffic stops. And there's times if an officer's busy, we do go and we help the streets and we take calls. Um, so we don't have an in-car camera. Um, we have a lot of cameras in the middle of the car. So that's all we're asking for on that.
Okay.
Y'all have a drone and stuff too that, y'all, y'all have a drone for the...
I, I bought some, oh, sorry.
Make sure y'all have what you need, in other words.
Yeah, we got, I bought some drone.
Yeah, you better come up there, Kathy's gonna come get you.
I bought a couple of drones for the sheriff's office. Another reason I'm kinda wanting to wait on this is there, this year, shouldn't there be a couple, oh.
Half year?
Half year?
Half year, yeah.
Out of Mount Pleasant, put a bill in that would, drones that I purchased would make them more or less off the lead in five years.
Okay.
And so then there are also been some federal legislation. What it is, is they don't want anybody using V J I, which is trying to make drones and using government funding to pay for. And so they have put some bills into, some of them say you can use it for five years, some say you can't. Some say you have to use them immediately. But anyway, I'm kinda wanting to wait on that, and then that also gives us a chance to, 'cause there's a couple American-made companies, companies that make them in America that are, that are about ten, fifteen thousand dollars and more expensive than not near here. China's the way everyone take them off you. But they can also, everything that we video when those cameras are uploaded to a cloud, that apparently they have access to. So...
Okay.
Everybody flies one, they own a map, and if you mess with one, they're gonna be, they're gonna hot air them and fly across the country, but anyway.
Yeah.
But, and for that reason, and then I just know this is one of those years that we need to be frugal. I just think it might be best to wait a year to see what actually is gonna come out of some of this legislation.
Okay.
And, and come back at it next year.
Sound like a plan, just make sure you have...
Right now, just so we do have some in the sheriff's office. I knew it would hurt probably to go off and go ahead and get trained. That way she doesn't have to depend on one of me or one of the county guys to come out with it. But we leave them at the sheriff's office in town, so she can swing by here, and there's the blood being charged and all that. So she can swing by here and take off with it, and not have to wait on anybody to, help lock forward.
Sounds good. Be a pilot.
Untraining.
And that's all we have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
How about you?
I didn't bring my list, so if you guys have any questions, um, one of the things I wanted to know. The turbid meter had a purchase turbine here, here last month, or it failed. So that fifty two, fifteen, fifty nine hundred dollars will go away. So we spent forty two hundred dollars on a different one.
So we, we can scratch that for next year?
Okay.
The D V R three hundred portable analyzer, that's a remote unit that we take out. We also do some backup stuff in the lab at the plant when we're flushing. We're trying not to flush too much water, 'cause that's a wasteful. So once we get to a certain residual, we test that in the field and then we stop flushing. So through T C T, we have to flush, and the other unit we have is, has kind of some issues. It still works, we get it calibrated every ninety days. So if we don't go with that, we need to buy the one we have.
What's it cost to calibrate them?
Uh, it's part of a, it's a month or it's an annual fee. They do all our lab every ninety days.
New one would have to be calibrated as well.
Yes, I do it weekly. We have some standards that we can double check it, but we know if it's, if it's in compliance or not. High caliber heater currently is not operational. We're running small portable units down there. Usually two of them to keep that heated in the wintertime, so. They're usually on high, and you know how space heaters are, so not much to burn up down there, other than maybe some electrical. So we, we don't have a cost on that per se. Actually, yeah, I do have, it's actually not on this list. Give us thirty six hundred dollars. I have to react to my notes, but I do have a goal if you, you can do that, so. Analyzer and turbid meter, that's so we can, it's a chlorine analyzer for our, our filters. So we take, we take free chlorine with what we get, and we add one or two to make our chlorines for our disintubation. Currently, right now, we're going out and manually checking that. So during the evening when we're in there, we don't really know how the plant is operating. We just do a general average. So the way that dosage currently is going, we have to lie in the lows and try to get the middles. So with getting that unit, we would place our old C A B unit downstairs and then chlorine analyzer. So we would have that. So it's a compact unit, it's a two for one. Also have a controller. We probably have some electrical on top of that, but...
What is that turbid meter versus the one you, that we just bought?
So this is a, an online turbid meter, so we need to have that from the state also. Um, the other one's a benchtop, so when we take our samples, we will be able to test them by we come to the tap and grab the sample. Or like what we go on and do our distribution, we can do that every day, so. Flocculator reimbursement, that was supposed to be times three, but we don't know if that's gonna be a hundred percent of the cost. If I can get that down, going through the manufacturer instead of the, um, the vendor, I think they're checking the price of it. So we're gonna try to, try to work on that. But currently, our flocculators don't work out there. So the only thing we're getting is mixing as the water, water comes in and clarifies. We've actually gone down in our dosage right now, 'cause it's hot. And so I'm trying to make adjustments to make the plant as efficient as possible. Kind of think if we could get those working, we would save a lot on the other, which is the most considerable to use. Besides, we can manipulate which we will reuse. They haven't used it in two years, so it's...
What's that do, what's a flocculator do? So stir up the medium?
So what happens is the polymer grabs on the material, the dirt and other things. And the flocculator, what it'll do is kind of remix that, kind of suspend it, so it can keep getting bigger, a little, it'll sell better. Right now, we're getting...
It's pretty fascinating.
We're getting first pass. So whatever it grabs, and usually you have to load a dosage to get it to grab quicker, so it can settle forth and back underneath and help the wheels to our filters.
So is it just not flocculating properly or...
So it is, but it's not as efficient. Like I said, we're just using the, the flow that's coming in. There is a diversion, I'll call it. So we do have some mixing. There's two headers in those clarifiers that push the water kind of, I think it's five ways. But so that kind of stirs it in the center back.
So there's three chambers that it goes through?
Yeah, there's your center chamber, and then when that comes out of, off of there, it's gonna go underneath. Most of here is solid and settled, and we dump that off as sludge, as our liquids. And then as that comes back up to the top, it clarifies, and then we give that on our wheels if it goes to our filters. Try to get over ninety percent reduction in the particulate matter and the water before we get it to our filters. I think there's, there's some cost savings there. I just know it's, it's everything I've looked at for that clarifier.
Yeah, but it is. Would it help save on chemical if we had the flocculator working properly?
With the temperature right now, we've dropped fifteen mils per minute, which is not a percentage, but we're in. So we, we've cut back just because the heat is helping us. Once we get into the cold weather and the water gets cold, it doesn't react as fast.
Okay.
Try to extend the retention time, I guess, so when it's cold, water's more dense, so it won't settle as牢 either. So this is something we're, we're looking at. There's four of them up there, and they're, and they're currently not anymore.
Wow, okay.
Yes, I have one that kind of works, but I have a bearing that's out of the current, so maybe get on a need for a unit.
Okay, I'm not following on the times three.
They have eight.
Three times sixteen.
So there's four flocculators.
Okay.
Yep, how much is each one?
Sixty bucks. And I think I can get that down if I work with, don't worry, your box may...
So we're really looking at two forty?
So it's a big...
Yes, so that, I wanna kind of, one of the reasons why I initially put it in as one is to try to get one third layer to work and then see our, see if it costs it or is it, is it not worth doing, suffering in the wintertime and do what we can and sell it.
So do the, is there an advantage to replacing them all at the same time versus...
I didn't really do it as far as capital, it's just like, we're gonna do it, let's do all three of it. Like I said, I wanna get one clarifier, which there's, there's two in there. If I get the bearing fixed on one, and then get the other one fixed up, we should be able to test that on that one clarifier, so. See what happens.
So maybe this next year, just looking one?
We could do that and see what that happens. And see if there's a cost savings if we update it.
And sixteen thousand just to the furniture.
You think they've been down for like years, or like they haven't ran in a long time? You think they've been down for like years, or like they haven't ran in a long time? This is something we've been operating on for.
So we don't spend a lot of money on it.
Yeah, if you're going to build a water plant, you're going to have flocculators that go into it and they're going to work. And ours hasn't worked for however long.
I was just like saying that word.
I know it, it's entirely hard, isn't it?
It's actually kind of a fun word, I'll try it.
Give it a run. I'll know, I'll murder it.
It's the new word of the month.
But it does feel like we need to at least take a step forward, if we can put it in this year's budget, at least give one of these run into the next year. You know, I, I can't believe if they let us go down and just ignore it, not.
Well, they were using chemicals, they, it's not that the work wasn't being done, they were using chemicals to replace it.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, so what I, what I feel is happening is, um, the gearbox is are, are obsolete, so they have to retool. Um, so I'm going to go to Delaware and see, if we can work directly with them, we can see what they can come up with. Because there was a replacement, I think it was twenty eighteen, they did purchase one. Depending on what was available and what's out there, we might have one of the last clarifiers that uses that, so.
They all the same size probably, it's like, are they the same unit?
Yeah, all four will be the same.
Let's explore this a little more, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'd be interested in finding out a little bit more about that, like expecting to see if repurposing versus the same for maybe and its cost differential.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure how long they've been down, um, I know there's the friction risks in the old ones. I don't know if it would stop working and they would fix them, but some of them are not working anymore. So there's, there's a lot of things going on out there that, that need to be addressed, and that's just going to wait to kind of address that, so.
Appreciate you. First time I've had it brought up in a few years, I've been volunteering here, I've never heard of a, it being brought up yet.
Yeah, but easy fixes just to say, well, we're going to spend more money on that.
Don't be afraid to bring stuff up, don't be afraid to bring stuff up for share like this, because I mean, that's, we had no idea that there's four broken pieces of equipment that are important. You can use less chemical in the process. I think everybody likes to see water cleaned, less chemistry going into it, and I'm a chemical guy, if you, I mean, but if it's just.
Yeah, I think, I think what, uh.
It's a Band-Aid that we're spending money on chemical instead of having the plant working efficiently, let's work towards getting the plant working efficiently.
And how much have we been spending on the chemical?
Um, we were seventy five last year.
Mm.
Sorry, and it's, chemicals gone off over the last few years also, so it's.
And continues to go on that.
Chlorine was very expensive when I worked over at North Texas, in Auburn, Wiley, and it doubled and then in six months later that parts doubled. So I'm not sure where we're at currently. Ego lives, as, as far as I know, it's not that, it's, it's, it's kind of where we're at.
Chemicals have been coming down. They have, they have, they have.
So maybe.
Alright.
Anybody else?
Good. Thank you.
Okay, Katie, you want to talk a little bit about the animal shelter, I'll help walk you through harvest too.
Um. Good evening. Our main needs for this next year would be a generator. I would put that as number one because I happen to be out there building several years ago and we had that total blackout for days on end. That building has no ventilation at all, there's no windows, we can't open the doors, obviously, because the animals will get out. So, that would be my first priority, but we also need a chain of fence, just in case an animal does escape. Or for volunteers to be able to walk dogs outside the building itself, which we don't, we don't allow right now. So those are our two main things. The air ventilator system, we've actually had, um, Dr. Mack and another volunteer come in and they put exhaust fans in the cat rooms. So we're able to turn those on and off during a full day for the moment now. And so, I'm not sure that we actually still need that ventilator system. It was quite expensive and I don't know that it would be like that because of what we're using. So, we could not know, but definitely the chain of fence and generator.
And the generator may change a little bit because we're trying to combine, I'm sure, so, two meters and one, so there'd be one generator for.
Exactly. Right now, we have, we have two different meters and, um.
That would require a change in.
That would require two generators, so, um, we're, we've been waiting for the electrician to come out and assess everything, see what it would be to combine. But we do use, before we only used the front part of the building, now we're utilizing the back as well, so, um. We would need a generator, at least one generator, that would service the entire building and not just part of it.
How big would that be?
How big would the generator be?
Yes, ma'am.
I have no idea.
Kelly's actually getting, um, certified and, um, to be a, a dealer of, um. What's a generator?
Generator.
And he, he can, uh, calculate the, uh, water that's going to need for that. Uh, he may be certified already, but I know that he was in the process of having that done. He's the one that said, he was the one that brought it to our attention that it needs to be rewatered, pointing to where we left one. We can use one generator, because it does have two separate meters.
Our first, our first thought was, if something were to happen like that again, we could move the cats up to the front. But we have so many cats now that there's no way to move all of them, the cats that we have, um, if we were still having like five to ten. As, um, they had in the old shelter, um, that would be possible, but there's no one now.
How many animals do we have down there? Cats and dogs?
Cats and dogs today, we have, I, I counted this afternoon, thank goodness, a, a, a little puppy, she never made it down to it. Because then we would grill the other, but we had twenty four dogs and sixteen cats today.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, James is ill today, so he's not here, but basically he's asking for, um, a backup pump for a lift station. Um, because we don't have anything that's back, that can back him up, if one goes down right now, and then a, a replacement of, uh, one of his other pumps. Um. Really, the capital request for this year is significantly less than every, um, last year. Any other questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, hot funds, um, is the next thing that we probably need to look at.
Category, get those on my screen. Here we go.
We don't need to make a decision today, but, um, we need you all to be thinking about this. If you all have any comments, we'd love to hear them.
This is the place to be now this year, this is what, what is requested last year and has not paid out. We have the request for the balance of this.
When do we have to have this finalized, Greg?
Um, well, final decision is to be made by the first council meeting in September, if you're in trouble.
The first council meeting by September?
In September.
Oh, in September, so we'll need to finalize this next month.
We'll have a workshop beginning of March or something.
Y'all can kind of make the decision.
The twenty sixth.
Do we have what, uh, each of, do we have what each have requested from the county as well?
No, but I can ask.
Let, let's, let's get that.
Okay.
A lot of times there's, uh, good information that shows up the most requests.
So, you, you have to go on the twenty sixth, what you're going to do, but then you have until the eighth of January, June second.
Well, our, our revenue on hot funds has gone way down, so can we base it on last year's revenue? I mean.
I like appreciate it.
That's what I would recommend.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's some in there that I would.
And I, I mean, I know there's some more in the fund, but, I mean, if, if we're going to keep losing revenue and going up twice as much, or the requests are twice as much. We're not going to be able to cover.
There's a couple of them that have gone up substantially and not that they're not valid, but there's no money there.
Well, I thought that youth baseball, I thought they were asking for funds to redo the fields.
Oh, they are, that's what that twenty three is.
Well, that says sporting events, so.
That was last year, I think.
Oh, okay, but I thought in the hot funds, we don't, I mean, we don't own the field, so we can't give money for redoing.
If, if they are bringing in tournaments, which is a sporting event, they can request.
But I thought they requested the money to redo the fields, is that?
Well, they have, I mean, that, that thing's been neglected for ten years, it needs new, you know, Lowe's is the one that sponsored it last time, but it, it's the billboards.
They're asking to remove those up to par because they can't, they cannot get.
Post tournament, it's more tournaments.
Some areas we don't do better.
Right.
That's how they're actually.
Okay, but in the hot funds, it says that you can't use it to improve fields if you don't, if the municipality doesn't own it. I mean.
Well, you might follow up on what she said.
I will look into that.
That'd make part of our decision a lot easier.
Well, I think that request is pretty.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's.
That's a big number.
It is a big number.
That's a, that's a big number. I mean, I, I think that's pretty high, compared to you gave them, you know, forty five hundred last year. Yeah, anybody else else have anything on that?
Hmm.
Okay, there's, I just want to walk us through, walk y'all through a couple of things on proposed budget. Um, we can throw that up there. Um, there's a couple of comments that I had here and I wanted you to be aware of them. Um, you know, and obviously on the, uh, at the war impact, I'm taking Mary brought to our attention apart and we're giving a look at that. But, um, on the county fire department reimbursement, I want to kind of give you an update on where we are at that. The, the county, uh, has placed, it's my understanding, speaking, speaking, county judge, Marla, that they have put four hundred fifty thousand dollars in their budget for, uh, for our department. And it looks pretty solid so far, and I think that they're going to, I think they've had their public hearings and everything else on it, and there, it looks like they're moving forward with that. So, our fire department budget, they will fund about forty five percent, the city would fund about forty five percent. And then, uh, Blake and I are meeting with the board of the Franklin County Water District on the twenty sixth. And if they come on board, that's, they're coming in at ten percent, and that's about ninety six thousand five twelve. So we have more revenues that are coming in there that aren't shown on this yet, and won't be shown until we get a firm commitment from all of those. So you have another five hundred fifty thousand coming in on that. Um, the next thing that I wanted to point out, uh, the. Uh, had to do with, uh, on, on administration, some increases, uh, special projects. Um, uh, the first one is fifty one hundred zero zero nine, uh, special projects, it's permanent notes. We were going to increase the special projects up to forty five thousand dollars. Uh, I think it, it was twenty thousand, we added another twenty five, and that was for consulting expenses for the creation of public improvement districts. And consulting expense for financial management, evaluation, recommendations for improvement. Uh, we plan to share that cost with the EDC for the creation of the public improvement districts. Um, and, um, so we put that in there. Um, the city attorneys, which is fifty one hundred point zero one zero, has also been increased, um, from thirty to forty. And that, uh, is to cover any legal fees associated with the drafting of economic development agreements for GEO Frame. Um, which we will be doing, it looks like, early in this next fiscal year, and any additional legal work on the public improvement districts. Um, the next one is, um, I put the wrong number on there. It, uh, it's, it's not library services, it is inspection services. And, um, we increased that, uh, and these are flow-through, these get, we, we get revenue back for these costs. This is for inspection services increased from seventy thousand to a hundred thousand, and that was to offset the inspections that will be coming with GEO Frame. We wanted those budgeted. Um, the next, the next big change, and these are the ones that I've put in, uh, is, uh, school, training and travel. Uh, we wanted, I increased it from, I think, seven to fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, increased training load for administrative staff, um, municipal finance training, municipal law, leadership and management practices. We bumped that up. And then the final one was the tax attorney, I increased that by about, uh, I think it was eight thousand, I increased it by five to thirteen thousand. And this is for costs that are associated with tax work on delinquent or substandard properties through tax foreclosure.
So it's usually a pastor as well?
It's usually a pastor as well, so those were the, the main ones on administrative, if the council approves them. And, um, the, uh, obviously, we talked about some of the capital expenses denied, a lot of those are going to be changed that are currently in this proposed budget. Um, because there were some cuts made by, by the staff on that. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk about is, it has to do with lease vehicles. We've cut, uh, lease vehicles by four, I believe, four or five already. We look at it, we're looking at cutting, uh, more, uh, probably at least two more. Um, PD is cut down from thirteen to nine, and we may be talking about a few more there. Uh, we've consolidated others, and so we're going to have a much, uh, lower, um, uh, fleet management costs this upcoming year. Um, we're continuing to look at that. Next thing I wanted to mention, it has to do with our sanitation. Um, we've, uh, uh, I want to mention, I want to put a bug in your ear. Um, I want to put a bug in your ear about dumpster services. We're getting ready to see GEO Frame begin to do construction, we're getting, there's a possibility that we might see a, um, a Jozubi start on a, a, a large project, uh, at, at the, uh, spur in, in thirty this next year. And there are going to be some need for some dumpsters out there, and we're losing a lot of franchise revenue right now. Uh, by letting, letting, you know, anybody choose what dumpster service, and this council has decided completely, but I just hate to see us lose pot, potential revenue if we could have it through sanitation solutions.
When did that change? Talk about the roll-off.
When y'all threw the last.
The roll-off, don't.
When y'all threw the last contract, you took out, you allowed anyone to come into town. The only people we can collect franchise beyond, you know, source management, anybody else that comes into town, we don't look anything on them.
Give me sanitation solutions. Sanitation solutions, not waste management.
Or, or waste management, same age solution.
So, and they, some of these projects are going to be roll-off level projects, so I just put a bug in your ear, be thinking about that. Uh, I understand, you know, about when they control costs for customers too. Um, but I, I, I just hate to see us lose franchise, uh, money, um, if we don't need to. Um, let's see, I guess that was, oh, a, a reminder on the animal shelter. Um, counting and pause, pay two thirds of the cost, we paid one third, so, you know.
Currently, we're paying one hundred percent of the nutrients.
Yeah, and pause is paying, and that's an, that's a side, they're paying, they pay a third of. Yeah, and PAWS is paying, and that's an, that's a side, they're paying, they pay a third of, uh, the operating cost. PAWS pays a third of the operating cost, but they also pay a hundred percent of the nutrients paid cost. So that's not coming out of, from the county.
So the budget that we just got, budget number request, we're, it's a third?
A third, a third, yeah. And they have been very faithful about making sure those payments, I mean, they've been, they've been great partners, and, and hopefully the county be a great partner with us on the fire department too. Um, the, uh, the parks and rec budget, um, the big capital expenditure there, we put in a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we, and we put a plug of a hundred thousand dollars for the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant match if we should start on the first phase this next year. We're not sure on the timeline on that. The twenty-five thousand dollars is a quote, is an estimate for putting a pier at City Lake. So, those are the big capital requests there. Um. Oh, and on the, uh, utility revenues and water and sewer fund revenues, um, we're, we're holding off on projections on what those rates might look like and what our total revenues might be pending an analy- uh, analysis from, uh, uh, new gen strategies. And we've had, I have that promise to have it back within two weeks, so we should have that, those numbers by the workshop. And, and that'll be good. Also, by the workshop, we'll go through this budget, proposed budget again, and kinda trim and, and recalibrate everything that we've talked about tonight, uh, so that we'll have a little bit better, more comfortable figures to look at.
Crazy with these companies coming in and stuff. I know one time we talked about impact fees, but in that last bill, didn't they do a way, we can't do that anymore?
Well, they put, see, good point, Mark, they put strict restrictions on that.
I didn't, I don't, I don't understand that, because it's gonna cost us more to have them here. Somebody's gotta pay for it.
The Texas legislature is not a friend of cities, that's all I can say. Anyway, that's, anybody have any questions?
Can, can we comment on the proposed budget?
Yes.
Absolutely, I'm taking notes.
Um, I, I'm, I've just been looking at the numbers, and I, I think our revenue numbers be, need to be a little more conservative, because I think they're too high on a lot of them. Like, um, sales tax collections, we've got it in at one point one million, well, we've, we've never collected. Even when Love's was still in business for a full year, it was, our highest was seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. So I don't see how we're gonna go from that to one point one. I think we need, I mean, we can't, we can't base our budget expenses on revenue that we're not gonna get.
Absolutely.
So I think, first of all, we need to trim down these revenue numbers. Well, I, I put, I put nine hundred, but I, I think that's still even a little high, 'cause we haven't even hit eight hundred.
That's pretty strong growth. Yeah.
So, I mean, I'd rather be, I'd rather have it lower and collect more than not hit it.
Yeah.
And then we've based our expenses on revenue we're not gonna get, so.
Yeah.
Tell me about four thousand one?
Uh, four thousand ten. It's at one point one million, and we've, we've never, we haven't, we haven't ever hit nine hundred. The highest was eight thirteen, I'm sorry, not, not seven ninety-five. And then building permits, uh, we've got that at two hundred, but this year is a hundred and fifty, I don't.
Well, he was mentioning that the permits with, um, the companies coming in are gonna be more, is that, where you had that on that line?
That was inspection fees, wasn't it? At a hundred thousand?
Well, permits would be up too.
Permits would go with it.
Permits would be up all the same.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if I'm comfortable with two hundred, but, um, I'll look at that.
We could start charging for, we could put stickers on business doors, like Lance Pearl does.
Uh, the franchise taxes, is that not the franchise fees?
So Center Point Energy, Swetgo.
Those are franchise taxes, okay. And we've got that.
So anybody that can, they're the only one that can be here.
Okay. So that's at a hundred and sixty-five, I, we never hit that, I think that oughta come down. And then there's just a lot of little ones, like our thousand or five hundred, but I mean, if we don't collect them, we might as well get them out.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
What, which was that?
The last line you were talking about.
Oh, the franchise taxes, it's, uh, four thousand nine. We've got it at one sixty-five, and most we've ever collected was a hundred and fifty-two back in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm curious as to why that has declined over the years.
So.
Torrent inspections also.
I was just looking at that.
We aren't doing that.
I think they were not doing that.
So it should be taken. I think that's where we have to start. We have to start with the revenue, get re- good revenue numbers, and then you can decide what you, how much you have to expense.
Absolutely.
It oughta be pretty much a zero-based budget this year.
You can definitely feel a, a slowing in the, in the economy. We see it as our, in our business.
So.
I know, I tell you, so I mean, it's not a year to, to think we're gonna be blowing out, sales tax collection numbers when the market, market is softer right now.
Well, I got a question for the fire chief. There's a line in here forty nineteen for fire safety inspections. If we get that south, where do we begin charging for these inspection services?
Oh, that sounds like another tax.
You wouldn't want to, uh, arrange.
I'm just, I, I'm just asking, there's a line item on here at zero.
And you, uh, so, so to do a fire inspection for a, uh, city, most cities do not charge for the actual inspection, it's an annual inspection?
Okay.
Right now, though, we pay a third party. They, the reason it's zero is because we did not pay it. You call for the inspection, you pay it.
I'm gonna call for inspection at your house.
Business.
Credit card processing's in there, at five thousand, and we collected four dollars this year, so I'll take that one out. Credit card processing, forty forty-eight.
Forty forty-eight. Forty forty-eight.
I mean, just, just from what I put in, I came up, that lowers revenue by five fifty-six, but that, um, I took out the hundred for the, for the zoning fees, but you explained what that was, so I, if I leave that, our revenue's going down about four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Well, we'll be sharpening our pencil.
It'll be good to say the real numbers from our water collection. I mean, it's, it's, uh, that's been a mess for the first sixty days of implementation, so that gets sorted out when you see we're actually collecting.
Yeah, that four fifty-six is just in the general fund, though, that didn't, that didn't even include the water.
Yeah.
It sounds like I'm picking on the fire department. I'm not. I'm trying to ju- think about this software and what it might help move here. So forty thirty-one is fire call fees. And, you know, last year it was right at fourteen thousand, this year we got to budget it for fifteen thousand. So is that, does that software help that revenue stream increase?
Where, where are you looking at fire?
Uh, line forty thirty-one.
Is that the insurance reimbursement?
It is, but we're also putting account.
He's probably looking at his expenses, he knows probably happening.
Do you see that? You, I can show it to you here. It's a little bitty, but I can show it to you.
Oh, he can look at it right here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It's on the revenue side. I don't know if you have that sheet down here, fire calls, fire call fees, yeah.
Oh, I don't.
We've collected thirteen nine this year, we're budgeting fifteen.
'Cause if that software helps, it might generate a little more revenue, so that's all I'm.
Oh.
And this is the insurance reimbursement.
So it doesn't do anything for that?
No.
Okay.
So the county, so the county paper call right now, you call them, they got the county, the county reimburses us, we, we do a paper call.
You would not use that for the insurance, the health insurance.
No.
So if the county is.
You, you've collected more than thirteen thousand for paper call, haven't you?
I have the exact number, I did.
Well, the, the first.
We've collected.
Maybe the first check we, we applied back to fifty-one twenty dollars.
Right. The, uh, we collected more than also the cities paid out. So it's kind of a, we pay, and the city pays outside, and then we get a little bit back to the county, which helps us with too, when we put it out.
So if the county's gonna be paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is this line still gonna be here, or does it go away?
I haven't, I haven't talked to the.
That has to be a.
It stays there.
We will continue to do.
Intergovernmental transfer or something.
We will continue to, uh, anything up and down the interstate to file on their insurance or rent or some cost, called cost recovery. We will continue to do that, so we will still generate a little revenue from that off of the.
Is it gonna be fifteen thousand?
This year it was almost, close to twenty.
What line is that on?
It's on the shell of fourteen.
Right. I just don't have it, so I have to. But I can get you a court, so I can get them to actually.
No, I'm just trying, I'm just reading on, starting with the right revenue, so that we know what we got to spend. And I'm just trying to see, okay, there's places we can have to reduce, or there're places we can add to it, so.
Right.
Like I said, I would, I'm trying to keep, keep it up here, I'm just curious.
I think that, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, but I would think that the county contribution, the water district contribution would go into forty twenty-six, which is intergovernmental run of revenue, as a revenue line. I'm not sure why that's there.
So that would make up what you said, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to look at my phone and do this. 'Cause that's not on here anywhere right now for the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Right, that's not on there yet.
The revenue we get from the county and the water, yeah.
So that's gonna be by, right at five fifty.
Yep. Which was about what you were showing on the page, but.
Yeah, which, we created line items for, I mean, you could create an account from, for each one, which we, like we did for PAWS in Franklin County for the animal shelter, where you could see exactly how much each one of them are contributing.
Yeah, I think that's what, I, I'm not sure why forty twenty-six is in there. It's shown as zero, um. It doesn't need to be that, but we can create two, like you said, two different revenue lines for that.
Do you want to do one for the county, which would be four fifteen, and you want to do one for the water district, so we can.
I'd show them separate, just so you could see.
So.
Because they're gonna get taken out of that on other pages, and so that way you can keep track of balances. I wouldn't put them together. Harold, you've been quiet.
It's 'cause, um, I'm, I'm not well enough to be a jackass tonight, so just wanted to.
I figured you'd come with an accent, eh?
No. No. No, I'm gonna find.
Glad you got chlorid in your water, or fluoride in your water again.
Okay. Wages.
Administration right here.
So we'll have a good worksheet, shop on the twenty-fifth, right?
I just carried those over.
What time is that, remember?
Except for Monday and control.
We've been having a six. So twenty-sixth, I won't be there. Twenty-fifth, I'll be here, Monday.
What are we doing? A workshop on the twenty fifth?
For a workshop.
For the budget, okay. Twenty-fifth, August twenty-fifth. So are we kinda gonna sit down and go line by line, is that?
I think we'll do that beforehand.
Beforehand, okay.
Yeah.
'Cause like, I mean, I just saw some things, like in expenses, like, um, I think in court, there was like eighty-five hundred for special projects.
Court.
We, we, we could take that out.
Twenty-six, we're gonna do something next week.
There was like eighty-five hundred in special projects for court.
Let me scroll.
I mean, you start adding all that up, it's, it becomes, ah, yeah.
It gets to be a bigger number yet.
Yeah, it's under court, Kathy, um, special projects, eighty-five hundred.
I think we were gonna do a two hour study. I guess normal access, zero, and it's zero. I think we have them coming after.
I've got that marked now.
Is there retirements, something going in the wrong category?
I mean, I have a bunch of them marked, but I've been really.
We got the negative.
Totally, line by line.
Retirement.
I think that's gonna happen next week.
I just wanna play out.
Because it has to, if we gotta have an approval of twenty-sixth, that's all that matters.
Yeah. So we're gonna do the workshops.
On the twenty-sixth, yeah, I think it'd be a shorter meeting.
Oh. He was twenty, thought he said the twenty-fifth.
Twenty, he did say twenty fifth, 'cause I'm going on the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
So this is twenty-fifth. But we're gonna have to do something next week, if we're gonna go through this line by line.
Mm-hmm.
All right, y'all ready to adjourn?
Yeah.
Make a motion?
I already ordered a drink.
Make that's a motion for Mark in a second from Harold.
I'll bury you.
Call in favor.
Bye.
Look for a signal at twenty-fifth. And before.